I'd like to call the public session to order, please. We do have a few speakers who will be addressing the group. I'll call your name, just give us your name and your address, and I'll just know what's on your mind. First speaker is Dave White. Come on up, Dave.
I've come here tonight, basically, for something that's happened with my sister, Kathy Warren Dorff, who owns some property down on Skyler Street. I would like to ask, I think it was Ronald Reagan, that once said, "Mr. Garbichak, will you please take down this wall? I would like the city of Oswego, the mayor, to take down Oswego's version of the Berlin Wall. I find it amusing that we block off a paper street because we're having a problem with some, with my sister and her husband, over some rental property and people parking. I would point out that there are other people on that street that you have authorized to park there and to use that street. So now, if we got, if you're mad at my sister, was your next move to block off Noncom Street so I couldn't get out of my driveway? You know, if you've got the problem with Warren Dorff over that property and the use of it, don't you think it would be better to talk to them rather than take it out on everybody in the neighborhood? And, and the other thing that bothers me with this stuff, you know, I mean, why did you do that? I, I'm look, I'm looking here at this thing, and also with the, with the attacks and the people that rent there with the parking, because they're in, what is it, public space. Yet, I think, Mrs. Garbichak can tell you, that I've foiled for everyone that's got a permit to park in public space, can't find anybody. But my esteemed alderman, Mr. Enright, who's making an issue of this, has two places that he doesn't have a permit for public space, he's running, he's got an apartment that he doesn't have a permit for. If you're going to enforce the zoning, then at least be in compliance with it. So I would like, if it's possible, to have the county council direct the mayor to remove the Berlin Wall. Which I think, to send the, to spend all that money with the, the crew down there for the day moving their stuff and all that equipment, to what? So three or four cars can't park there? If you've got other people parking there, what's wrong with them parking there? And if you've got a problem with them parking there, why don't you simply sit down and see if you can't resolve the problem rather than putting up a wall so nobody can use the full street? I would appreciate your support. And then we can, you know, I mean, let's head. This is, this is just wonderful, you know? Come here and you gotta ask people not to block off streets? If somebody's violating the zoning, then correct the zoning problem. Should we ever do that in 15 minutes? Or better still, go over on Utica Street, block off their driveway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Miles Becker. Mr. Becker.
Quit knocking the microphone out. Miles Becker, 87 West Bridge Street, apartment two. This is the Warren Dorff night, okay? I'm speaking for Donny. Now, I know that we're in the Franklin Square Project there, okay, at the state. Donny, there's only one adversary over there, and we all know who that is, and we love him dearly. But, the thing is, Donny, he, he runs a pretty good ship over there, okay? As far as the exterior of that building over there. Now, it did do some things there during Harborfest, and he repaired it, he attempted to repair it, okay? And then he got stopped by the new employee because he, he needed a blueprint and 3D drawings. Look at, the same old statement comes out of Albany. "Oh, small business friendly we are here." Well, if you're so friendly, where's the big things happening here, okay? Where is the economic growth going? And don't point over there at Novellus because you never can tell when they're gonna leave. I, I just, Donny is not a bad guy. If you talk to him, he stops me on my si, on my bicycle and he says, "Hi, Miles, how you doing?" Please, okay? I know he can be obstinate, we'll use that word. I'm not afraid, but you know, you gotta know how to talk to poor Donny, you know? Three pensions, but anyway, besides all that, just, just let him do his own thing up there and, and, and let him, just let Donny be Donny, you know? What's wrong with that? Okay? This is the Warren Dorff night, all right? Anybody, you know, he's no worse than, Marcel Marceau has got a place up there on that one-way street, okay? We know where it is, you all know where it is, it's right down the road from Highway Oil. You tell me he's in compliance with that house. I'm being nice right now, okay? With that house is a shambles. And then I walked a little further down towards Kenny Drugs, and I saw two houses down there. I don't know why they're still standing. When I was going to school in Rochester in '73, they had controlled burns up there. They called it, you know what I mean, oh boy, urban renewal is what they call it up there. And you know Detroit's going through it right now, if you want to be like them. Those three houses are terrible, terrible. And Donny can't even come close to that because he pays his taxes on time. At least he's paying his taxes. And you've got people in this town that don't even know how to get it on time yet. Taxes. Sewer and water, I got a friend of mine, hasn't paid it yet. Let's think about small business friendly. Let's not be like Andy up there in Albany. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Miles. Is there anyone else in the assembly that would like to address the group? Okay, well seeing, there's no one else here, so I will adjourn this meeting for the regular session at 7:30. Let's call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
To honor the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor Mayor.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Mayor.
President.
He is excused. Thank you. We do have some, something under the mayor's report, and I do have a proclamation that I'm gonna read, and I'm going to award this presentation to Michaela Walker, and I believe Sadie and Megan, and Michael, and Leila. So, I'm a one of Team Michaelas. I wore this when Michaela was diagnosed with cancer, we wore this for a long time. And I'm happy to say that she's, she's healthy, and we're, we're thrilled to have her this way. So I can put this down, but I'll always remember her strength, her courage, and her parents, too, because I gotta hand it to you guys. That was a tough one, you know? So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read this, and then we're going to, I'll, I'll hand this proclamation out to you, you girls, and, and well done. So, the proclamation is regarding Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which is September of 2014. Whereas families, caregivers, charities, and research groups across the United States observe September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. In the U.S., almost 13,000 children under the age of 21 are diagnosed with cancer every year. Approximately one-quarter of them will not survive the disease. A diagnosis turns the lives of the entire family upside down. The objective of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is to put a spotlight on the types of cancer that largely affect children, survivorship issues, and most importantly, to help raise funds for research and family support. And whereas Child Cancer Awareness Month is a time to honor and remember children and families affected by these rare diseases, and help rally support to give kids with cancer better outcomes by supporting our groundbreaking research. And whereas although much remains to be done in cancer research, the U.S. has come far in the fight to understand, treat, and control childhood cancer. Thanks to ongoing advances in research and treatment, the five-year survival rate for all childhood cancers has climbed from less than 50% to 80% over the past several decades. Researchers around the world continue to pioneer new therapies and explore the root causes of the disease driving progress that could reveal cures or improved outcomes for patients. Despite the gains we've made, help still does not come soon enough for many of our children, and too many families suffer pain and the devastating losses. And whereas now, under the Affordable Care Act, insurance companies can no longer deny health coverage to children because of pre-existing conditions, including cancer, nor can they drop coverage because a child is diagnosed with cancer. This month, we pay tribute to the families, friends, professionals, and communities who lend their strength to children fighting pediatric cancer. May their courage and commitment continue to move us toward new cures, healthier outcomes, and a brighter future for America's youth. Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Gillen, mayor of the city of Oswego, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage the Oswego community to join me in reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer. And witness whereof, I have hereby set my hand and seal this 25th day of August 2014. So I want to hand this proclamation, and I want to recognize Michaela, my friend, my little Christmas buddy, who hopefully should be with us this year to hand out the presents for, for Santa. And we've got Sadie and Leila, they were the little fairy princesses, the Fourth of July, awesome job. And we got Michael and Megan, and I've, I've known Mike since he was a little kid, from St. Mary's. So it's, it's a real pleasure to hand this out. If you kids want to come up here, and parents, too, please. That's the best part of this job. All right, do, that's all that I have to say. Any of the councilors have any reports? Whoa. Where do we start? I guess I will start with the proud part.
Thank you. I would just like, the proclamation, the color is gold, and they're using ribbons, gold ribbons, so I'd like to see storefronts put them up, you know, different eateries. It'd be nice to really just show your support out there in the city.
Great idea, great idea. Counselor Van Buren.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to Sean. You know, it was a hard road, and I hadn't known him very much, but him and his wife put up a real strong front there and made sure that they took care of her and everything. It's fantastic to see that it paid off. You guys are doing so well, and I'm happy to support you in this and in the future, and I see her having a great future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Second of all, I would like to address, I would like to address Ambassador Miles Becker, representing the Warren Dorffs. I just want to shed a little knowledge, if you will, some history, perhaps, a history lesson for Mr. Becker. Mr. Warren Dorff, as nice of a guy as he is, is suffering from several self-inflicted wounds, unfortunately. His problem for the Washington Square Project, I believe you called it, we'll just say the Sting rehabilitation, started with step one of not getting a building permit. That was cited by our zoning enforcement officer, Sam Dyack. Actually, one weekend before, our new employee took office. So it was not Ms. Birdzel that actually addressed us, it was Sam Dyack, our zoning enforcement officer. To go down that road, Don then proceeded to have a miniature tantrum regarding this issue. From there, he skipped several channels that needed to be addressed because of the location of his building, the first being the building permit, second being site plan review, third being the historical review, fourth being the planning board. All of those things needed to be met because he is a downtown business. The city of Oswego has design, downtown design guidelines that need to be followed. Those committees and boards execute that guideline. So, to try and accommodate Mr. Warren Dorff and advocate for your business-friendly request, we opted to hold a special committee for the, of the historic review board, to get him to the planning board faster. Now, Don still didn't think that these requirements were necessary, but just to give you an idea, there was an email sent out from several members of the city staff, as well as councilors, trying to relay this to him so he could understand what the process was. Just to give you an idea, we've arranged for a special meeting of the historic review committee this Thursday, August 7th at 4:00 p.m. Please come a few minutes earlier at 3:45 to verify that you have all of your submittal requirements with you. They review your plans, inform an advisory opinion. They may approve your plans, they may reject your plans, or they may approve your plans with modifications. If they approve your plans or approve with modifications, your application and plans will be forwarded to the planning board. Step two, the planning board will then hear your case next Tuesday, August 12th at 7:25. We had put him on the agenda to get him ready so that the board members could review in anticipation of the, I don't want to say it.
Negotiations.
Sure. Negotiations that we had made with, with Mr. Warren Dorff that were not well received. Three, once these processes have been finalized, you can apply for a building permit, and he will be ready to go. So, there's some middle requirements that he needed to meet, just so those are clear, because I feel you're a little off on those as well. He needs a completed application, which was attached, so that he could have one. Two, he needs seven copies of existing photographs of the four sides of the facades of his building. Just to let everyone know, he submitted 107 random photos throughout history of the Sting, which are no good, and I will say maybe, and give him the benefit of the doubt, that some of them could have been used. So he may have met one requirement. Three, seven copies, proposed architectural drawings of the front and side facades, southeast and west, showing the proposed renovations. These should have sufficient detail to properly describe your proposal, and follow the downtown design guidelines. I mentioned those earlier. See the attached downtown design guidelines. Don was submitted a set of those, so he could understand what they were. And/or, keep that in mind, proposed views of a 3D computer model. So they weren't required to have a 3D model, but it's certainly an option. So it wasn't necessary. Just so you and Mr. Warren Dorff know.
Oh, you may all.
I appreciate it. Material samples include all materials and color samples being used on the renovation. He also had that, as he had already purchased all the siding for the project before getting approval, if it was even going to work. A risk that Mr. Warren Dorff took, and unfortunately, it didn't pan out for him. So, as we discussed, if any of the above four items are not submitted, the historic review committee has the right to turn down your case and request that you come back with more information, so they can properly review your plans for renovation. If that is the case, then you'll have to wait until 28th of August to see the historic review committee again. So I find it unfortunate that Mr. Warren Dorff didn't take us up on our offer to do this. Now he has to wait until the 28th, and from what I understand, he's not planning on attending that one either. So he's prolonging his problem. These issues are his. I don't see anything clearer than the information that was provided to him. We can't really be more business-friendly than that. I think that's pretty accommodating to him, so please, as the ambassador for the Warren Dorff clan, please relay that to him.
I shall.
Thank you, Ambassador Becker. I'm all set, Your Honor.
Thank you, gentlemen.
While I'm telling you.
Counselor Enright.
Well, since we're on the, so I'll get to the Warren Dorffs, I just wanted to address Dave White's complaint about the use of the public space that is behind the Old Shaggy Patch. Now, that place behind the Old Shaggy Patch is not a paved area. This is grass, and it's not used by two cars, it's used by 13 cars, okay? Which, if you can imagine what this looks like when it comes to the fall into the early spring, it, it sort of looks like the bog. Ever seen the bog at Watkins Glen, or maybe out the Speedway? It's this big muddy area that, you know, a small boy could drown in if, if you weren't careful. And along with that stuff comes litter, and sofas, and, you know, mattresses, and old televisions, and computers, and things that end up all mixed up back in there. So, as, you know, the alderman, I wanted to try to approach this, and, and I did meet with, with Dave a year and a half ago, and I even met with the mayor, and the council president, and Dave in front of his house, and explained to him just a simple process of what everybody has to do is apply for use of public space. And on top of that, I even gave him four months to comply, which in those four months, they tore up the grass and, and, you know, littered it with beer cans and whatever, but still, you know, we have a deadline, and there was nothing. I even supplied a drawing made up by Bob Johnson of what would be acceptable, just to bring it in front of a planning board and to get this wall rolling. But to this date, apparently, Mr. Warren Dorff does not feel that any laws of this city apply to him, and that this is just, you know, this is a college town, and we do whatever we want to do, and whatever we have to do. So, just to protect the neighbors from the terrorism that's going on down there with a alleged frat house that is going on, and all the garbage and the cars parked up there, we did place barriers in front, and it is looking much better. And actually, it was in the interest of the college students coming back, because they're not told that they can't park there. They actually go there with the, with the assumption that they have parking. So to relieve the police department and our parking girl from consistently going down there, day in and day out, and issuing tickets to these kids, this was, my feeling, was a better solution, with the intention, this is a temporary situation, in that when we do have funds in our budget, as I talked to the commissioner, that a nice curbing is gonna go there, a nice high curbing, and it will be restored access to the neighbors, who, by the way, have not been able to access that road when the college is back, because there's 13 cars that are blocking it all the time. So, that's really what the deal is, and if you could just pass along, Dave, please just come and apply for a permit, and do it, everybody else in the city does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Todd.
Well, I agree with Fran that every single thing that he just said is true, that they have met with Dave repetitively, that we're all in agreement that this is probably an illegal fraternity. Because of the fact that we, in order to keep ourselves from liability, and Dave may be able to argue with me, the procedures we have to go through in order to block it off, I think a better solution would be, since they can't legally park there, is to remove the barricades, because we can't block it off without a council resolution in two years to actually close off the street. Move the barricades, if anybody parks in there, they're not supposed to park there, ticket them, and after the second time, start towing them. Get the revenue from it, they can't park there, they've been put on notice that they can't park there, and as Fran says, there's 13 cars parking down there most days, and it's blocking the access to the people that actually need to get to the property back there, which was the whole reason, four months ago, we didn't block the street off to begin with. I agree with Fran that the intent is good, but I don't know if we legally can block off the road. I think we should do that, remove the barricades, and then just ticket anybody that parks there. Because if you go down there on a Friday or Saturday night, you can sit there and park across the street and watch them charging five bucks for everybody that walked in the door for the party there. I mean, it's still hard. So I agree with Fran, there's a better way to do it, we just ticket them all, and remove the barricades so everybody else can get them in there. Instruct the police department to go down and do it. They're not parking legally, and that's where we're at. I mean, with blocking off the street and the access to everybody else, I don't know if we legally can do it. That's my only argument.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
I discussed this a little bit with Counselor Enright and Counselor Todd. I believe because it's our street, we may have the ability to block it off, you know, when, when we'd like, since if we do have total access over it, it is ours. That may be the case. I don't know about Fran's extent that he wanted to go to, I certainly know he's been having a lot of problems, and he's working pretty diligently to take care of that. I will agree with Mr. Reagan, I mean, White, on one point, and that is, the discussion may need to be had on this, I would like to recommend to Counselor Enright to put it on the agenda for next week's committee, and we could talk about this, and invite the neighbors and residents down there, so that everyone can get some face time with each other to understand exactly what the problems and issues are. I'd, I'd love to put this one to bed, because I know it's been a problem for quite a while, and I think Ron would agree with us, he's dealt with Kathy and Dave for quite a while now regarding specifically this issue, and it'd be nice to, to end it, so. I certainly agree with both of you that something does need to be done, and we should try and pull that iron out of the fire, so.
Any other comments? Counselor Todd.
I think what Counselor Van Buren said is a good idea, but what this goes through is a bigger problem than Fran and mine for. And I know we've tried to address this since last May, but here it is, school's back in session, and we have a college president that still continues to refuse to come in and have any kind of dialogue with the city in trying to relieve some of these problems that we have with these illegal fraternity houses, the house parties, and all the other stuff. Her crime data that goes on in campus, and the SUNY system has a big push on this, is all indicative of the type of behaviors that happen on her campus. So what they do is they try and push as many of those bad behaviors out into the city where we have to deal with them, so it doesn't reflect on the SUNY system. And we have an wonderful organization here called the ORA that's trying to revitalize these neighborhoods, that's trying to bring them back. And it's all pointless until the college gets involved. As I said earlier, corporate states president decided to do something about this, he gotten, or that he got involved, they came up with new rules and guidelines that happen within the campus and within the community that outline what happens with bad behavior inside the city. We've got it back going on here already again, and until we get some cooperation from the college on how we deal with off-campus activity, none of this stuff, the amount of overtime we spend for the police department, for the EPW to clean up these messes, for the fire department to constantly respond with the ambulance to injuries, and all sorts of other things that happen on a weekend, is really expensive, and we need to do something about it. And basically, what's happening with the 21-year-old drinking age is, people can't go into bars anymore, so what they do is they have the party, which costs their rent, and you can drive just about anywhere in Fran and mine's ward on a Friday or Saturday night and find 15 to 20 of these house parties that all have a minimum of kids in it. And they're every single weekend. We need cooperation from the college, they refuse to give it to us. They won't even send people down to be ride-alongs with our PD to help mitigate the problems, but they have no problems driving up and down 104, ticketing people for speeding when they have nothing to do on their campus. It's an issue, and until we get it fixed, the ORA, all this other stuff, it's all pointless, because that's the first step that has to happen. Until cooperation happens, it doesn't matter, because nobody's gonna stay here and beautify their neighborhood, if they still gotta deal with a 100-person house party next year.
Thank you, Counselor Todd. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Van Buren.
So to support Counselor Todd and his efforts here, I would like to extend an offer from Counselor Capwitz and I, and I'll speak on his behalf, I'm sure he'll be fine with it, that we will draft a letter requesting a meeting with Deb Stanley, and I'll, to put it so that everyone can be there, a workshop with President Stanley to address these issues. And I will ask you if you could submit your issues to me with as broad a brush as you can muster, to get me what those are. I will put those in the letter and submit it to you, gentlemen, for
I will put those in the letter and submit it to you gentlemen for signing and we will send it off to her to request a meeting. I'll ask that you also pick the date that best suits you and if you could give me several of them, that would be much appreciated.
Counselor Enright.
I just wanted to mention, we did have, you know, we've called several meetings that we had Dave and Kathy present in the mayor's conference room during all this time. And every one of these meetings, we've gone over, you know, what the city code has and just what the specifications are and gave him extra time, all these things. And this is, again, this is over a year and a half ago. So nothing's changed. And these barriers were just a little incentive to maybe that he would come forth with some, you know, with applications. And, you know, if he came back with the applications, they got approved in a couple of weeks and he would start this process, I'm sure those blocks would just disappear, you know? But he just needs to go along with it and until he does, or until we can get the curbing poured, I believe that they're going to remain right where they are. I feel that is the, at this particular point, I don't see where anything would do any good unless it is followed with the permit application.
Counselor Van Buren.
I'll get Counselor Myers if she's out here. I've been mugging the microphone.
Thank you, Your Honor. Fran, I have to disagree with that. I can't see punishing, because you're punishing the other neighbors there. You can't punish all of them because of one's actions. I think Counselor Todd said it right earlier, is let them be ticketed, let them be towed, you know? After a while, they're going to get fed up with that. And eventually, they're just going to go find somewhere else to park if they keep getting ticketed and towed. But to punish those other neighbors down there because of one's actions, I think that's wrong. That's my take on it.
Thank you Counselor.
Just can I respond quick for that? I mean, I don't disagree with Counselor Myers at all. I mean, that's the route I took. And it was one that we put the police force down there and we just hammered them with tickets after tickets down there during the day, but it made absolutely no difference because of the alleged illegal fraternity that's being run through there. After ten o'clock, there's not thirteen cars parked there, there could be a hundred cars parked there. And a lot of times during the day, they block that street off for the neighbors anyways while the college is in session. I talked with the neighbors and he actually stood out there and he said he can't get his, we can't get access to that anyways because of the cars that are continuously blocking his access to it. So, you know, if this was just a matter of the access, the kids are doing and they're just parking off to the side, I would agree with you, but it really doesn't turn out to be that way. They sort of take over the whole thing and actually, I mean, it's an elderly neighbor and I'm afraid of a person having a heart attack with a confrontation that are happening between the neighbors. And then there's the phone calls to the police and we're wasting all these city reserves that go down there. Like I said, a simple permit, that's all it would take for this to go away. And I don't know how long it takes for somebody to do that, but maybe his writing is broken or something, I don't know. But it just is ridiculous that somebody's acting like a two-year-old and we've bent over backwards and there's nothing. I mean, I'll meet with them again, but like I said, it doesn't change anything. Come with a permit.
Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, well, at this time, what I would like to do is ask the mayor to initiate an investigation into the alleged fraternity house in both the third and the first. I would ask the mayor to please start that ASAP and whatever means necessary to get an investigation done. I know it could be costly, but if that's the case and this is what's going on, then we really need to nip it in the butt now. Because they're just coming back and I think by sending some investigators out, I think we have some really good investigators here that can find out. So, Mayor, I'm asking you on their behalf, I would back those two gentlemen in the first and the third on their ventures of investigation of those fraternities.
All right. We'll discuss that, yeah.
Thank you Counselor.
Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Van Buren.
I agree with Counselor Myers a little bit in terms of the method that was used, but I won't, I will advocate for your ability to regulate what happens in your ward. If you deem that those barricades were what was necessary to remedy the problem, even on a temporary basis, I certainly support you on that. You know, you've spoken with the residents, you've contacted them, I understand that. So I will just make sure that we push for an open public discussion. I've found that these matters, either zoning or planning or code or any of them, are best resolved with resident engagement. And a lot of times, that issue can restore confidence in the neighborhoods in terms of seeing how the city is going to remedy an issue that they have and restore the confidence of the, I'll say affected in this case, because they are now a part of the process and have seen what the residents are actually doing. I've seen how these kind of confrontations play out in neighborhoods. Sometimes a lot of people won't want to talk when they're going there if you're saying there's screaming matches happening. We've certainly passed the point where we should have brought them to the table in the first place. So I would push for that meeting and if you feel that the barricades need to stay, I'll support you in that effort.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Todd.
Is this going to be on the agenda for next Monday night?
I certainly hope so, Counselor.
We have that on the agenda for Monday night and have it written to the owner of that property and all the residents that come in there and try and get a resolution to that next Monday, Monday night.
Your Honor, could we ask that the zoning office send out a letter, much like they would as a notification letter to residents if a zoning change was going to happen and that, just to notify them of the meeting and ask for their participation in the discussion?
Sure. We can do that.
Two-block radius.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All right. Well, with that in mind, will the clerk please call Resolution 360?
He would approve the minutes of the county council meeting.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 360.
Resolution 361 would approve the use of West Park by a rise for a light-up-the-night run-walk event to be held on Saturday, September thirteenth, 2014.
Counselor Enright and Counselor Walker, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 362.
Resolution 362 would approve the use of Red Lake Park for a fundraising event to benefit the American Red Cross to be held on Sunday, September seventh.
Counselor Enright, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Please call Resolution 363.
Resolution 363 would grant a variance of the noise ordinance to Nicholas J. Sereno, owner of White House Lanes located at 295 Derby Street, for an event to be held on Friday, September fifteenth.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 364.
Resolution 364 would authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Wayne Drugs, her property located at 24 through 26 West Community Street.
Counselor Myers and Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Todd, did you have something to say?
No, I'm good.
Counselor Van Buren.
There was some discussion about this and its terms of the price goes and everything during the committee and Mr. Branch actually reached out to us and would like to sit down. So the mayor and I discussed putting forth this number in good faith, just to show some good practice that he is interested. He'd like to come to us and discuss his plans and what he plans to use the parking lot for and price, of course, he also wants to talk about that. So I'd be interested to just let everyone know that that's what's going to happen, that we are going to pass this until the end of the year and that Mr. Branch would like to come back to the table and discuss what he plans to do with his business in the city.
Yeah, we are, Mr. Branch is out of town this week and we're going to get together next week with planning and community development, so we can put some plans together. So this will get us through the end of the year. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
I have seen some distance.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes five one one.
Please call Resolution 365.
Resolution 365 would authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with W.D. Malone Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project modifications to the sanitary sewer rehabilitation, 10th Street, 2nd Street.
Counselor Myers and Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 366.
Resolution 366 would authorize the mayor to sign change order number one with J&amp;A Mechanical Contractors Incorporated for project modifications to the West Side EFMF and pump station upgrade project.
Counselor Enright and Counselor Myers, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 367.
Resolution 367 would authorize the mayor to sign change order number two with W.D. Malone Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project modifications to the combined sewer rehabilitation, risk twenty-five percent.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 368.
Resolution 368 would authorize the mayor to sign change order number three with C.O. Falter Construction Corporation for project modifications to the West Side EFMF pump station upgrade project.
Counselor Enright and Counselor Walker, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 369.
Would approve a bond resolution in the amount of $3,150,000 to pay the cost of reconstruction of the water treatment plant.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Enright, any discussion? Counselor Van Buren.
Thank you. I'd just like to let the counselors know and the public, for anyone that's interested, Counselor Kaplitz and I have both spoken with Brian Folgerite, the water treatment supervisor, and he's giving a presentation on this project and an update for where the plant is so that we can understand what's going on and how far he's made it in the project. The pitch he gave earlier this year, kind of, it had a strong undertone of the dire nature that this need to be completed, so we'd like to know where that's at. That'll be on the next committee meeting.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 370.
City would approve a transfer of funds from the contingent account of the police department.
Counselor Myers and Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 371.
Resolution 371 would approve a tenth of the New York State Association of Citizens project to be held October fifth through the eighth, 2014, in Lake West of New York under the request of Susan Depp, Albury City of South.
Counselor Barlow, Counselor Enright, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 372.
Resolution 372 would approve the county council to consent resolution number 373 through 374A from the floor without the mayor's permission.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Walker, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 373.
Resolution 373 would approve the sale of West Park in 2014.
Counselor Myers, Counselor Walker, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
The resolution passes six zero one.
Please call Resolution 374.
Resolution 374 would approve the space of Trinity Catholic School in order to place advertising signs for their annual craft show to be held on Saturday, October fourth, 2014.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Walker, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Myers?